So what, should I wait? Who's saying they'll be back in one minute?
Karen.
Oh. So should we wait?
No.
Anyways, okay, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna, I'm gonna discuss today the Oversight Personnel, Resident Appointments of the Common Program Requirements and the Glossary of Terms. I know it's a lot, isn't it? Y'all gonna be sick of me because there's a lot, I did a lot of questions, more than anything else. But anyway, so I'm Lynn Bass, I'm in the Urology Department at EBMS. Alright, so this has nothing to do with tagging, but I had to share it anyways. So Denise, are you looking at this? Okay, so our zoo here recently got a lion from where? The Henry Biolas, I guess you say, Zoo in Madison, Wisconsin. This, this was in the paper last month. So we did, I guess they euthanized our last lion, so this is like new to us. We have a lion, they're gonna get a female, and then they're hoping that they're gonna have cubs. So it's like, I think they're gonna get two females. But anyway, so I wanted to give my shout out to my friend in Madison, Wisconsin. Thank you very much. It's great news. Always have to have some kind of correlation between Virginia and Wisconsin to my friend Denise. So thank you. I know that's silly, but alright, let's get started. Alright, so this information Oversight, the categories that are under Oversight are sponsoring institution, participating sites, recruitment, resources, and other learners. And then personnel, what's under that will be Program Director, Faculty, Program Coordinator, whoop whoop, and other program personnel. And then the resident appointments, what's under that is eligibility requirements, number of residents, and resident transfers. Okay, so Program Letter of Agreement, well, I think we all know what that is, PLAs. Move this over, there must be a Program Letter of Agreement between the program and each participating site that governs the relationship between the program and the participating site providing a required assignment. Okay, so this is a sample of a Program Letter of Agreement. And it has to be renewed at least every 10 years, see right here. Identify the faculty members who will assume educational and supervisory responsibility for residents. It's in this area here. It must specify the responsibilities for teaching, supervision, and formal evaluation of residents. It must specify the duration and content of the educational experience. It must state the policies and procedures that will govern resident education during the assignment. And then last, it must be approved by the DIO. So this sample of this letter of agreement came from the ACGME website. So I just plugged it in and put the little, what the requirements were, so you can see. Okay, so the Program Director must submit any additions or deletions of participating sites routinely, providing an educational experience required for all residents of one month full-time equivalent or FTE or more through the ACGME ADS system. So this right here, if you have to add, this is what it looks like on the screen. This is an example. An ADS. Okay, so recruitment, I think we all know this. We've got this drill, the program in partnership with this sponsoring institution must engage in practices that focus on mission-driven, ongoing systemic recruitment and retention of a diverse and inclusive workforce of the residents, fellows at their present, faculty members, senior administrative staff members, and other relevant members of its academic community. So it's expected that the sponsoring institution has and programs implement policies and procedures related to recruitment and retention of minorities underrepresented in the medicine and medical leadership in accordance with the sponsorship institution missions and aims. The program annual evaluation, which I've got here as a sample, evaluation must include an assessment of the program's effort to recruit and retain a diverse workforce. And this is not, this is the questions in ADS, excuse me. So you know, our questions, you've seen them before, we had to do them the last couple of years. What, so she have to describe how your program will achieve diversity and how the program um, will achieve it with individuals participating in the training program. So here's a sample here of where you would put it in ADS. Okay, resources, the program in partnership with the sponsoring institution must ensure the availability of adequate resources for resident education. Okay, and the program in partnership with its sponsoring institution must ensure health and safe learning and working environments that promote resident well-being and provide for. And this right here are the, are questions that are in ADS, but it must provide for access to food, right there. Safe, quiet, clean, and private facilities available and accessible in the proximity of, for safe patient care. Clean and private facilities for lactation that has refrigeration capabilities. Secure areas, lockers, and locker rooms that must be locked. Reasonable accommodations for residents with disabilities. So since this says it must be provided, you're checking all those boxes in ADS. And if you're not, I guess you need to check with the, um, the facilities on that to find out why they don't have it. Okay, so enough of that. Now we're gonna get into the questions. And feel free to just chime in, you do not have to raise your hand. We're all just gonna answer and be whatever, scream it out or whatever. Okay, so here we go. Who approves all complement increases?
RRC.
That everyone's agreement there?
Yes.
Yep, must be approved by the review committee, correct? Who said that?
I did, a couple was it.
I can't, I, who, who's we?
Ms. Karen.
Yes, okay, very good, thank you Karen. I can't, I can't see you on the screen, so I apologize.
Yeah, I don't have a.
Okay, alright, next question. The Program Director has the authority to remove program faculty members from participation in the residency program education at all sites, true or false?
True.
Very good. And as you see, for those that have not been at my meetings, I have put where it's cited too, so you can go back and look at it. And the program requirements. Okay, so who must the program report circumstances when the presence of other learners has interfered with the resident's education? DIO, GMEC, RRC? Maybe both DIO and GMEC, or all of the above?
I'm gonna say one and two only.
Okay, that's correct, that would be four. So it is the DIO and the GMEC.
Yeah, Amy, we got it.
I'm not keeping track of who's answering correctly, but maybe someone could, they want to. Okay, so qualifications of the Program Director must include specialty expertise and at least blank years of documented educational and/or administrative experience or qualifications acceptable to the R, to the review committee. The 10 years, three, four, five, or none?
Three years.
Correct, at least three years. Yep, which makes sense. Yeah, for sure. Okay, faculty members must pursue faculty development designed to enhance their skills at least blank. How often do they have to, do you have to do professional development? Is it monthly, bi-weekly, semi-annually, annually, or none of the above?
I would say annually.
Correct, annually. Yep, okay. Who reviews and approves a Program Director's nomination? Is it the department, the residents, GMEC, all the above, or none of the above?
The GMAC, three?
Yeah, very good, yep. Okay, the Program Director must provide document verification of program completion for all graduating residents within blank days. Is it 30, 60, 15, 20, or none of the above?
30.
Very good, yep. And it's interesting because we had somebody who left our program that he didn't complete the program. And I don't even, I mean, like, he was here not even the first three or four months. And we were like, we hadn't even done evaluations on anyone yet, but we had to do one on him. He was a military guy, and I guess he was gonna go out anyways, and they were probably gonna have him do something. So they wanted that verification. Probably gonna do a dock in the box or something like that, but anyway, so that stuck out, and I will never forget that. So even if they have not, you haven't even done a cycle of evaluations, they'll want something. All faculty members have to complete the annual ACGME faculty survey, is that true or false? Only core. Very good, because we just did that, didn't we? Only core. Yep. Okay, I can't even trick you guys. I'm trying to be easy, but I know, I can't even trick if I wanted to. Okay, do residents who leave the program prior to completion? Ah, we're just talking about this, really need timely documentation of their summative evaluation. I just said this, is that yes or no? I, oh my God, I gave you all the answer. Hey, I feel like was anybody listening, yes they were. No, they were listening, thank you, okay. Okay, any non-physician faculty members who participate in residency program education must be approved by the blank. Is it Faculty Affairs, GME, by the Program Director, sponsor an institute? Should be institution, or RRC?
Program Director.
Program Director, yeah.
Very good. Okay, final approval of a Program Director resides with who? The department, the residents, RRC, GMEC, or none of the above?
RRC?
Or?
Or GME.
Say GME.
Yeah, I think GME. I would say RRC, because GMAC will send a note or whatever. RRC.
Very good, very good. Who's that, Karen, is that you?
Yes.
Very good, you're right, it is the review committee. So yes, first it goes to GMEC, but then the RRC, they have to approve it. Because remember, they have, you have to do the CV and all that, and they have to see it. So it's, yeah. Okay, very good. Okay, who selects the core faculty? Is it the RRC? Is it the GMEC? Is it the Program Director, all of the above, or none of the above?
Program Director, same.
Yep, very good. Okay, is the Chairman responsible for ensuring the program's compliance with the sponsoring institution's policies and procedures on employment and nondiscrimination? Is that yes or no?
No.
Correct, it is the Program Director. Alright. Who is the person that manages the day-to-day operations of the program? Is it the Program Director? Is it the Program Coordinator? Is it the Chairman? Is it all the above or none of the above?
Us.
Ew.
Uh, yeah. That's just one thing that we do, right? That's one of a million. Okay, prior to acceptance of a transferring resident, the program must obtain verification of a summative competency-based performance evaluation, previous educational experiences, both one and two. No verification is required, or none of the above.
One and two.
Both.
Both, that's correct, both. Both the summative evaluation and any previous educational experiences. Okay, now we're gonna get into Glossary of Terms. And thus, it's just, there's no way to study for this. So I guess, I guess questions are good, a good drill, so here you go. Okay, additional information that may be requested by the review or recognition committee as part of the review process is called what? Is it a citation, clarifying information, complaint? That should be complaint, that says compliant, that should be complaint, sorry. Unfortunate situation, or none of the above?
Citation.
Citation. No, two.
Let's read that again, maybe? So you think it's a citation? To say that additional information is requested?
Clarifying information.
Thank you, that, think about that, because that would be something, if you got a citation just for them asking for additional information. So it's a clarifying information. And that wasn't a trick question, but I can, I can see why you would think it was a citation. Okay. A situation or event that significantly, significantly alters the ability of the sponsoring institution and its programs to support resident fellow education is called adverse event? Is it alleged egregious event? Is it extraordinary circumstance? Patient safety event, or an unfortunate situation? Think about it, alters the ability, the sponsoring institution to support resident education.
It's either one or three, I'm gonna go with one. Adverse event.
It's an extraordinary.
It was my second choice.
I guess just really, if you just really read the sentence, it would make sense. It's a situation of it that significantly alters the ability of a sponsoring institution and its program to support education. That would be an extraordinary circumstance, like, I don't know, an earthquake or something. I don't know, I'm just using that as the example, extraordinary circumstance. So that, that would make sense. Okay. And association of two or more organizations, hospitals, or institutions that have come together to pursue common objectives, like graduate medical education, is called what? Is that like PEC, CCC?
Consortium.
Consortium. Consortium, consortium, review committee, or none of the above? Three.
Getting away from the pronunciation, three.
Thank you. Consortium. Okay, a resident who enters a program and has the objective of completing the entire program is called what? I'd say, okay, categorical resident, a smart person, transitional year resident, international medical graduate, or none of the above?
Categorical.
I don't know, I'm thinking it's a smart person, but yeah, it is number one. Very good. Okay, a finding of a review or recognition committee that a sponsoring institution or program has failed to comply substantially with a particular accreditation or recognition requirement is called what? One citation, a clarifying information? Uh, that should be complaint, I don't know why I kept putting compliant, or unfortunate situation, or none of the above?
That's a citation.
Yes, correct, yes, and that, so I guess the lessons here is really read the question, because then you'll know, yeah, that's right, it is, it's citation, yep. And note to self, we don't want one of those. If you're fishing, you want a citation because you want it, because you got a big fish. But when it comes to accreditation, you do not want a citation. Okay, a fine, oh, wait a minute. Sorry about that, okay. A review or recognition committee's decision to confer an adverse accreditation or recognition status on a sponsoring institution or program, and I'm not gonna read all that, is called what? An adverse event, alleged egregious event, an extraordinary circumstance, a patient safety event, or an adverse action?
Adverse event.
Adverse action.
Correct, it's an adverse action, very good.
Didn't see that.
So are we good with that? Because it says there, it says right there at the top. It's decision to confer an adverse accreditation, da-da-da-da-da, so it kinda says it right there for you. Okay. A required body comprising three or more members of the active teaching faculty that is advisory to the Program Director and reviews the progress of all residents or fellows in the program is called, is it PEC? Clinical Competency Committee, a consort, consortium? Consortium, consortium, thank you very much. Review committee, or none of the above?
Two.
Two.
Correct, CCC. Yep, okay. So someone who moves within the same or between different sponsoring institutions and within the same or a different specialty. When entering a program requiring a preliminary year at the PGY2 level, even if the resident was, oh my God, simultaneously accepted into the preliminary PGY program or the PGY2 program as part of the match, is called a categorical resident? A transfer resident? Transitional year resident, or an international medical graduate, or none of the above?
Transition.
I would say.
That's a long statement, I mean, you gotta.
It said, I would say three, the way it reads.
Alright, think about it, someone that moved, that moves within the same or different, in a different specialty. Okay, they've moved in the same or different sponsoring institution.
That means it's a transfer resident.
Thank you, yes. It's a long, that can get kinda confusing, but yes, you're correct, it is transfer resident. Because they've moved. All the other ones are staying, I guess. Okay, the occurrence of an alleged accreditation violation affecting a sponsoring institution or program determined by the president or chief executive officer or destiny of the ACGME to be of sufficient importance and urgency to require rapid responses called what? An adverse event, alleged egregious event, an extraordinary circumstance, a patient safety event, or none of the above?
Alleged, great, whatever that word comes to.
Egregious.
Thank you.
Yes, you're correct, yes, because you're involving the president and the CEO, and it's urgent, requiring a rapid response. So yes, you're correct.
Alleged. What does egregious mean?
Egregious?
Really bad, I think.
Google it.
Egregious means really, really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, an allegation that a sponsoring institution or program is not compliant with accreditation or recognition requirements is called what? Citation, clarifying moment, uh, complaint, an unfortunate situation, or none of the above?
A complaint.
Very good. Allegation, yep. A term used to designate requirements so important that non-substantial compliance must be justified. A sponsoring institutional program may be cited for failing to comply substantially with a requirement. That includes this term when the requirement is categorized as core. And it's called what? Is it should, could, must, always, or none of the above? The term.
Must. They must.
Non-substantial compliance, it's non-substantial compliance must be justified. That would be should. So important that non-substantial, I guess is the.
Justified, though.
But it should, the term is should. And in the requirement, sometimes they say should, and then sometimes it's must, so yeah, it is kinda confusing. Should really means probably, you should, you better, I guess. The organization or entity that assumes that ultimate financial and academic responsibility for a program of graduate medical education and has the primary purpose of providing educational programs and/or healthcare services is called what? Sponsoring institution?
Yes. Okay, ladies, that was the boss, I gotta fly. Thank you so much, love you all.
Thank you, alright.
Test.
Thank you. Yes, the sponsoring institution. And I guess the key there is, has ultimate financial and academic responsibility. So that would be sponsored, okay. The individual designated with authority and accountability for the operation of a residency fellowship program is called a program coordinator? A DIO, a CEO, a program director, or none of the above?
Would say program director.
Correct. Yep. Okay. When the recognition committee determines that an application for recognition of a new sponsoring institution or program substantially complies with the recognition requirements, it's called what? Continued recognition, initial recognition, osteopathic recognition, voluntary withdrawal of recognition, or none of the above?
Two.
Do initial recognition.
Right, because it's new, initial, that's correct, see, new, yep, very good. Okay, when the review committee determines that a sponsoring institution or program has failed to demonstrate substantial compliance with the applicable requirements, it is called administrative probation, accreditation withheld, probationary accreditation, continued accreditation with warning, or none of the above?
Continue with warning.
It is probationary accreditation. So let's dissect that, because it says they failed to demonstrate substantial compliance with the requirements. So what was, what did you say accreditation? What is, what was the one you said you thought it was?
The warning.
Accreditation with warning, yeah. I mean, it is kinda confusing, but.
That makes sense, though.
I think so too, you get probation. Okay, a group comprised of volunteers that sets accreditation standards, provides peer evaluation of sponsoring institutions or programs to assess the degree to which these comply with the applicable published accreditation requirements, this is long, and confers an accreditation status on each sponsoring institution or program with regard to substantial compliance with these requirements are called, uh, so the group are, is it PEC? Is it CCC? Is it consortium? Review committee, or none of the above?
Review committee.
Yes, very good, yep. Okay. Are y'all over this already? I got, I got some more, I told you, I'm gonna be, I'm drooling, yeah. Okay, an injury that was caused by medical management rather than the underlying disease, and that prolonged hospitalization produced a disability at the time of discharge, or both, is called, is it an adverse event, an alleged egregious event, an extraordinary circumstance, patient safety event, or just an unfortunate situation?
Adverse event.
Very good. I think at first you could probably think, oh, it's not a patient safety, but I think it's more than that, because you know, talks about prolonged hospitalizations, disability, and talks about prolonged hospitalizations, disability, and, yeah. Okay, if a sponsoring institution fails to complete a clear site visit, the administration of the ACGME may recommend to the ACGME board that it is placed that sponsoring institution on administrative probation, accreditation withheld, probationary accreditation, continued accreditation with warning, or none of the above?
I would say administrative probation.
Yes. And it's because...
Administration.
My, yeah, right, it's the sponsoring, it's the, yeah, right, it's the sponsoring institution, correct. Very good. Okay. An event or situation that did not produce patient injury, but only because of chance is called adverse event, alleged egregious event, we're gonna say that a million times, extraordinary circumstance, patient safety event, or near miss?
Patient safety event.
I thought that too, but it's near miss.
Okay.
Cause it, but only because of chance, yeah, did not produce the patient injury, that's probably why it was a near miss, that would make sense. The lead administrative person who assists the program director in accreditation efforts, educational program, and support of residents fellows is called a queen, a saint, an angel, a program coordinator, all the above, five? I would say five too, but it is program coordinator. Okay. A term used to identify a requirement which is mandatory or done without fail when the requirement is categorized as core or outcome is called. Should, could, must, always, or none of the above?
Must.
Right. Very good. So I think that's the difference, cause the last one we had did not have that, and it was should, do you remember? And this one, since it says it's mandatory, I think the other one, we can kinda go back, um... The other one just said it's so important that non-substantial compliance must be justified. Maybe that's the difference, but this is mandatory means must. A site visit that assesses selected aspects of a sponsoring institution or program identified by a review or recognition committee is called focus site visit, full site visit, a tenure accreditation site visit, an unannounced site visit, or none of the above?
Focus site.
Focus.
Yes, right, because it says it's selected aspects. That's good. Only got two more left, I swear. Okay. When the review committee confers an accreditation status based on ongoing substantial compliance of the sponsoring institution or program with the applicable requirements is called continued accreditation, initial accreditation, voluntary withdrawal of accreditation, continued accreditation with warning, or none of the above?
Continued accreditation.
Correct, number one, continued accreditation, we all want that, yes, yes, sign me up, right? Alright. Last but not least. An adverse event, near miss, or other event resulting from unsafe conditions in the clinical care setting is called adverse event, alleged egregious event, an extraordinary circumstance, patient safe event, or none of the above?
Patient safety event?
Very good.
Yes.
Yep. So you can see what the differences are by the, um, the meaning, so... Yep, so that's it. Does anybody have any questions? You got questions for me now? Now that I've done a million questions?
Hey Lynn, I had a question. And this is probably a newbie question, but the RCC, or is it the RRC?
It's, they cut it back, I know, I still, some of us oldies like me, we say RRC, but it's review committee, it's RC.
Okay, and is that a sponsoring institution committee, or does it exist at the national level through the ACGME?
The ACGME has a review committee, and actually, if you go in, I, into the website, they have who the members are that represent urology, the review committee, there's, I don't know, maybe six or seven that are urologists some, and then whoever oversees that, I don't know if it's still Catherine, Kathleen Quigley, or whatever, whoever she is, but, so there's a group of them, and then they, um, they're in for a couple years, and then they get voted, others get voted in, so... I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, are there others outside of urologists in our group, I mean, do they have others? I think they've had residents or other people too.
Yeah, but I think they're probably all urology unless they're, like you said, a part of ACGME, you know, if they're an administrator from ACGME.
Right. I mean, I could possibly go in, you want me to go in and see if I can show you? Do you wanna do that? Hold on, I gotta, you know what, that was silly of me, hold on. Silly me, okay, I gotta move, hold on. Ah! Are y'all still there? Sorry! Let me take, let me, I'm gonna take these down, so hold on. Bear with me. Okay. Go to ACGME. Okay, that's not doing it. Hold on. First, I need to share my screen again, that might help. Slow, slow. Okay. ACG. I'm not, I'm on my laptop, so that's why I'm kinda... Specialties, let's go to urology. Where are we, right there? Right here, see, it says residency committee members. Well, why did it come up? Okay, here they are, so it's Dr. Wallen. Corporate, these are all the representatives, and these are all urologists that are on the committee. So, yeah, they are all urologists, I don't know if any of them are residents or whatever. Yeah, here's one, resident member here. See, right there? Okay?
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, and then the executive director is Kathleen Quinn Larry. And then there's her contact information. So, it's right there. Alright. I actually, at the last, not this last ACGME, but the one before, they had like a little breakout session that was just for urology, and it was virtual, so I popped in there, and I was a little late. It was like, there's only two or three other people in there, but she was in there, Kathleen, and I wanna say Dr. Wallen, and then maybe one other person, and they, soon as I popped in, they were like, Lynn, tell us about yourself, where are you from, I'm like, oh my god, I wasn't expecting all that, you know, usually you can just go in somewhere, maybe not have the screen on and just kinda be quiet, no, they wanna know who I was, I was like, oh my god. But it was a really good discussion, so I highly recommend if you ever get an opportunity and could go to ACGME, to definitely go into, you know, and, and meet them, or talk to people within urology, and they had lots of questions and stuff, it was cool.
They actually have offered, um, some short meetings with them, virtual meetings with them, so we met with them maybe a month and a half ago, cause we're looking to apply for a complement increase, and so, it was great, I mean, they had, they knew that that's what we wanted to talk about, and they had our, um, case log information available to talk to us, so, it was, it was great. Short, but, but just what we needed.
Yep. So anyway, so Kath, Catherine, if you haven't really explored the ACGME, cause I know you're probably busy doing a million things, but I should've actually showed you while I was on the screen, cause they actually have, you can sign up for the learn, and there's all kinds of videos and stuff where they can, do you know what I'm talking about?
I think I've seen it, yeah.
So you have to, um, actually sign up for it. You sign up, and then there's all kinds of different, like, webcast or whatever that you can see, and a lot of them are just like little clips from the ACGME meetings that they've done. Um, and so I recommend, when you have chance to go in and just kinda explore all of the things that they have on the website there.
It is very good, I have looked at it, and done a couple of them myself.
Actually, at my institution, I'm just now completing, they, I've done a whole course, it's called Pathway to Promotion, and a lot of the, every month I have like course material, and then I have an exam I have to take, like, if I'm in school, right? So, and a lot of the things I have to do, they're in the learn of ACGME, we've had to go in and do some things, look at it, and then we get tested on it. Um, and then we've had to read articles and other things, and then write little essays, and the test, let me just say, the tests that I've had to take, they're not just multiple choice, they're like, you have to write like little essays. So, but anyway, so I'm at the end of my course, and now my next thing to get the, the actual graduation is I have to do a project, so I'm working on that now. So it's like, yay! So, that's how I know, I know a lot, a lot about the learn, um, videos.
So, what does this course get you?
A lot of heartache, no, I'm kidding, so like, okay. I'm just joking, okay, so, at my institution, they, they upgraded people on their positions, but, um, and the way they did it is to be TagMe certified, but then there's some of us, like me for instance, who've been around for a long time, and the only way to get from one, one level to the next is by degrees, and I'm not going back to school, so this was a way that us, some of us, or if you're just in your position and don't, aren't going to go to school to get your masters, or vouchers, or whatever, it's a way that you can get promoted up to the next level without that school, this is like our own school, I guess they developed it.
And, and the program that you're doing, is it, did your university, is it, is it public?
No, it's our GME, our GME made that up. They, they went through, I guess, some process with the masters of public health or whatever, that they had gotten material, and they developed their own. So this is new, I'm in the first class, actually, it was myself and two other coordinators, we're the first people to go through it. So... We're like the guinea pigs.
What are you gonna do for your project?
Do you really wanna know? I'm really excited about it, okay, I'll tell you, so my project, and it's weird how it fell into my lap, because I'm already doing it, so, at my institution, not only was I doing professional development with a cure, but I was also on a team that I did professional development at EDMS, so it was kinda like hand in hand, I was doing both. But recently, we did a regional coordinator workshop, and we were doing them every year until the pandemic hit, and then for the last couple of years, we haven't had one, and I was like, we need to do one, so, I led the group, and we actually did one, it was, it involved seven under, other institutions, there was like eighty-five people that had took in our workshop, and we did it virtual about a month ago, and it was very well received, and from that, they all liked what we were doing at our institution, cause one of the presentations was on our professional development, how we're doing our TagMe groups and all those things, and that none of them are really doing much, so now, I had a meeting with all of them, with all the other institutions, like key people, and they all wanna collaborate with us on professional development, so actually, what we're gonna do is next year, we're gonna roll out a plan that's gonna involve all of them, so like our professional development, our institution would probably only be responsible for one of those, one month, and then there would be someone else. Um, so anyways, that's where we're going towards a multi-institutional training is what we're doing. So that's what my project's on. So anyways, I'm excited about it.
Yeah. It's great, when, when your project can be something you are working on, I mean, because...
Yeah, I mean...
Why create, yeah, why, why have to create something from scratch that's not gonna be beneficial?
Exactly, so I mean, it's like, I'm already working on it, so, it's great, and then we can collaborate, so myself, and there's another coordinator, her and I've done other kinda projects together, her and I are working on, are gonna do the project together, and we have to present it at a meeting, so we gotta present it at a meeting, and then also either publish it, or do a poster or something too, so, we've got that to do, and then, then we're done. And her and I have actually presented, her and I've actually presented at the ACGME meeting one year, this was a few years back, so, we've done things together, so we'll, we'll be okay. But anyways, I'm really excited about it. And I really like these TagMe groups. Because, because you learn a lot, and plus you can have interaction and talk and discuss things, it's a little different than you're going to a meeting and someone's drilling, you know, giving you a presentation, you're sitting there, I mean, I like the little interaction. And the discussions.
Will you keep joining us at least, Lynn? For events? Just so I can see you?
I'll be the special guest, right?
Yes, you can be our special guest.
I don't know, I guess, because I, to be honest with you, I've been doing TagMe presentations, this presentation, I've done some of it, but I really ramped it up a lot, so this is not like I did before, but I have a lot of presentations already that I've done that it would be easy for me to put things together. So, yeah, I'm a good, I can still, I guess...
Well, you don't have to present, you can just come and join us.
Okay. I actually, I actually...
That numerous people on here might, as we get through the year, volunteer to maybe do one.
Well, I think it's intimidating to think you're gonna sit there and make up all these questions, I think it is a big deal, but I will tell you, I would love to do a Jeopardy one, coming up. So maybe after y'all do one or two more sessions, I can come up, cause I've done those a couple times, so I can do that.
Jeopardy is really good, I love the Jeopardy.
And I'm gonna have music this time, cause last time I was like, I messed up and didn't have the music that went with it. But I'm gonna do it this time, I'm gonna step up, I'm gonna step up in my game.
Still have your Jeopardy, saved all of them.
You did?
Yeah.
And you haven't, you didn't tell the group, you passed, you passed the exam recently.
Yeah, I passed, yeah, I just came to be supportive.
Thank you, I love that. I love that, and you need to put that on your name all the time, I, I don't know, I've seen your name, but I haven't, hey!
I have asked several people to put it on my name, and they just forget about it. So Denise, I guess that's on you, are you the person that adds that to my name as the secretary?
Adds it to your name where?
On a chair, like the news water and stuff.
Yeah, I, I reached out to Kim twice.
Really?
Last year and this year, and she didn't add it.
Oh, I'm gonna add that to my list of things to talk about at our steering committee, it's getting really long.
Hey, listen, actually, I really feel that we need to, we need to maybe as, um, a group know who's certified, that would be cool, just the number, you know, like, how many of there are us? And, I don't know. Cause I don't think we really know.
I don't think so either, I don't know, you know, except for like, you know, this group pretty much, or if I see it after somebody's name, I don't know.
But it'd be nice to know, just... I don't know, maybe we don't even know, maybe we're on a need to know basis. But anyways, so yeah, I would definitely, I would, if you need somebody, again, I'd be more than happy, and I'd love to do a Jeopardy.
That sounds great.
Because I think that would be fun, cause that would be break it up, and it's not just, oh, my god, she's drilling, reading words to me, or whatever, because that would be something you're like, different ways that you learn, and you remember and retain things is what I'm all about, so today, in my presentation at the beginning where I was showing you where things are that we're doing, and that's a requirement, I was thinking maybe that'll stick with you, that you'll go, huh, that's right, like when you're taking the test, or whatever, you're gonna remember, this is what, because I remember when I took the exam, I'll never forget, I, I forget what the question was, but it was like, I know, I know where I... but it's like, I know, I know where, I know the answer, but I wanna find it, and I could never find it. And it was so frustrating to me, and I spent more time, when, if you get familiar with material and know where it is, and you can kinda relate, then those kind of worries go away. But I was so stuck on, I wanted to find it somewhere, and it was just buried somewhere, and you could, I couldn't figure it out. But now you got the find button, you know, you can find anything on a PDF, but for some reason I wanted to look for it myself, or whatever it was I was doing. And that can just, you're only allowed so many minutes on a question, cause there's lots of questions, so. And I think it's good to have these drills where we're just a question and quick give the answer, because that helps you too. The drill of a question and answering. So, that's why I got a million questions today. Anyway, so that's all I have. Anybody have anything else? I'm glad we have new faces here. That's good. And I hope that you join us again.
So our plan is every month to have some sort of professional development, um, session. Um, so keep an eye on your emails and the newsletter, um, although I think some of the stuff in the newsletter needs updating, so that, that's one of my goals. Um, after we meet with the steering committee, um, this month, is to make sure that the list of professional development sessions that we have planned thus far gets in the newsletter, um, and on the website. So you can get to the Acure website through the SAU website, so we'll get that updated as well. Um, but hopefully you guys will continue to join us, I will be sending, um, certificates to everybody later today. Um, I have another meeting to run off to, but thank you all so much, thank you Lynn.
You're welcome. Alright, y'all take care. Good seeing ya. Bye.
Bye guys.
Bye.